Good afternoon. Thank you for your patience. We're just trying to coordinate this. Welcome to our special city council successor agency meeting on July 27th at three o'clock. Before we start, I'd like to invite, well, before we start period Mercedes would like to read some guidelines as to how we're going to do this.
If you wish to make a general public comment or public comment on a particular item on the agenda, you may in you may indicate by using the raise your hand feature messaging to be unmuted or type your comments so it may be read into the record. Please be aware that written public comments, including your name, may become public record.
That was the bill. Do we have any changes to the agenda Mercedes? I mean, Marissa?
No, we have none.
Do we have a motion for council's approval of the agenda? You know what? I better back. Wait a minute. Let's back up. I forgot to do the pledge of allegiance. I am so sorry. So we're going to start that. If everyone would follow with me, please. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am sorry. Just got a little sidetracked with this new process. Okay. Do we have a motion for council's approval of the agenda?
No.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Awards, presentations, appointments, proclamations. We have none. Our next item is, excuse me, citizens' comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of the city council. Members of the public when recognized by the mayor should come forward, identify yourself, and please use the microphone. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state open meeting laws, no action will be taken by the city council this evening or this afternoon, and all items will be referred to staff for follow-up and a report. Are there any comments from the citizens? Mercedes, you have written ones or? Okay.
Mercedes, this is Marissa. In addition to the public comments that I forwarded to you to be read into the record, I received one after the fact. So when you finish with those, I have an additional one to read.
Okay. I have a comment from Angie Alvarez. If you rescind the ordinance declaring all businesses essential, then how much will Colinga lose in a year's time? If the gym, flower shop, salon, real estate offices, restaurants go out of business, we'll go out of town. If I have to drive out of town, then I bundle my errands. This means I'll get my groceries, gas, gym time, hair and nails done, catch a movie and whatever else out of town. The money that the governor is withholding is nothing when you look at the big picture. I believe all businesses are essential, and if things get really tough financially, then our council needs to tighten their belt. Temporarily get rid of all medical insurance and all city employees and council members give up travel expense reimbursement. That money can be used to help pay the rent for businesses forced to close at this time. Thank you, Angie Alvarez. I have a comment from Kevin Donaldson. I would like to, I would like to remind the council who your actual boss is. It's not the state of California. The CARES money is not guaranteed. This is money that has strings attached to it, as you well know. The decision before you should be simple, but this depends on who you will listen to. If you choose to close certain businesses ordered by the state, those businesses may close their doors forever. That is tax revenue lost until a new business opens. These businesses are also a livelihood of some of the people who choose to make this their town, their home. I pray that this meeting is short and you make the right decision for the citizens of Colinga and for its businesses. I have a comment by Chris Walls. To all board members, I'm writing to you today to first say I'm very proud of our council members for standing up for the city's right to open all businesses as essential. Now our governor is trying to blackmail us with $216,000 of so-called money we won't be eligible for because we dare to cross his unconstitutional order. We must take into account which would be worse for our city: unemployment, lost businesses, plunging home values, widespread poverty, tax revenues we won't have received, and overall horrible conditions to live in. Even if we do decide to rescind the order, there is still no guarantee we get any money from the government. Please do not vote to rescind the vote. Stand for what is right for this community. It is an election year. We will be watching. Thank you all for your dedication to our community. Thank you, Chris Walls. I have one more comment from Nathan Bosberg. Please, regarding this decision, regarding this discussion item on the agenda pertaining to essential businesses, I would urge council to show restraint and not cower to the demands of a governor and OES that is allegedly and inappropriately withholding funds by picking and choosing who gets funds and who does not, which according to the attached letter in your agenda packet from congressional members was not the intent of the CARES Act. We need to support our small businesses as being essential. This sends a strong message to the state on where the city of Colinga stands. You already voted for one in defiance of the governor knowing that something like this might happen. Stand strong and support our small businesses. This allocation of $212,000 will not go very far if our businesses are forced to close and even more people become unemployed because of this. The one-time money will not put food on their tables immediately or indefinitely and could aid in many more people requiring assistance that would only be temporarily unavailable and not sustainable. Colinga is a special place and our businesses provide backbone for the culture that we cannot afford to lose. We can be safe and be successful at the same time. Colinga citizen poll results. Quick poll about the state and governor's newsome's demand by Cal OES that Colinga rescind the essential business resolution that make all of our Colinga businesses essential. Those interested, those interested chose one of three poll options. Colinga City Council will be voting on what to do tomorrow at 3:00 PM, 7/27/2020. Read the resolution, the letter from some members of our state congress allegedly, potentially, and appropriately withholding funds. The results of the poll of 7/27/2020 at 11:00 AM. Poll question. Colinga should deny the request of all initiate and initiate a lawsuit against the state for potentially inappropriate withholding funds, as stated. Seventy-five people voted. Colinga should deny the request from OES and governor because our business survival are more important than one-time aid of up to $212,000. Twenty-nine people voted. Colinga should rescind the resolution to qualify for up to $212,000 in aid that can only be spent on limited things, loans, rent assistance, et cetera. Thirteen people voted. This poll shows overwhelmingly support to keep our businesses open and not to rescind the resolution with 104 people supporting our current resolution and only 13 people supporting to rescind the resolution. In fact, the majority support a lawsuit against the state. Please make the right decision and deny this request while looking into joining other cities to file a lawsuit against the governor for these actions. At the very least, ask other cities that they may be in the same vote if they are interested as well. Thanks. Nathan Bosberg, District Three.
Are there any more?
I have one additional that was emailed over that I can read.
Okay.
It is from Tammy Rivera and it states, Dear city council members, I encourage you to follow the governor's requests. This pandemic is not about your or your friends' personal best interest. Decisions need to be made on the best interest of the residents of Colinga and the state of California. Science matters and you must be listening to the experts, not politics. We must all work together to end this pandemic and save residents' lives. Your residents have to use the hospitals in Fresno, Hanford, and Visalia. These communities have a large population with limited ICU beds. Each resident in Colinga is important. Money and things can be replaced, but lives cannot. The life you save may be your own. And that is signed Tammy Rivera.
I, I just got an email myself from Marcos Ponce. Could I, could I possibly read that?
Yes, go ahead.
And I just want to clarify, you can read that into the record, but we need to get the citizens submitting their comments the correct way in the future. So they need to email info@colinga.com and that way we can ensure that all comments are received and they're not sent to an individual person who may not see it in their inbox.
Okay, I'll, I'll send that to them after we get off. Thank you very much. It says, my name is Marcos Ponce. My wife and I own the fitness lab in Colinga. Normally, I'm a very quiet person, but today I have to speak out. To all Colinga City Council, you, you all hold in your vote whether I get to feed my family or not. As you know, the federal government might not extend unemployment, and that is the only thing that's keeping business owners surviving. If you vote to close so-called non-essential businesses, once again, how will we survive? Do you have a plan for that? The government is supposed to be, be of the people and by the people and for the people, not of the government, by the government, or for the government. Our governor has already collected his forgivable loans for his business, but us that have applied for everything only have received food stamps. It doesn't get more triankled than that. You were elected to be our voice, not the governor's voice. If you don't speak out for us, who will? And that's all. Thank you.
Marissa, you have one more. Is that correct? I mean Mercedes, I'm sorry.
Yes, I have Barbara who would like to make a comment, and I will unmute her now.
Mercedes, is Barbara unmuted?
We're working on that now.
Okay.
Barbara, you're allowed to talk now. Can you test?
Hello? Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you for unmuting me. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. So I wanted to briefly address the city council about the, the demand that we rescind the essential business. I disagree with this demand. I feel that this is great overreach on the part of the governor of California. Our council has determined that all our businesses are essential, and I feel that we should keep them as essential. I also did vote in the poll. I didn't, I don't think I got my vote in early enough for it to be counted, but I did vote that, that we should deny the request from the, from the OES and the governor. I did not vote for option number one that got the most votes because I feel that it will probably cost us more money to, to, to file a lawsuit and take this to court than what our city can, can afford. If that is incorrect, then I would definitely vote to initiate a lawsuit against the state. Also, I wanted, I wanted to say that I feel like these meetings should be held in a manner that we can see our council members. It's very unsettling not to be able to see our, our council. When we are in public and we're able to meet at city hall, we are able to see each other, and I feel it's important to be able to see body language and, and, you know, the non-verbal types of communication that you don't get just by hearing someone's voice. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
I don't show any other comments at this time.
Okay, we'll go on. Thank you all for your comments, your input. Our next item is public hearings. We have none. Item five is the consent calendar. We have none. Item six, excuse me, is ordinance presentation, discussion, and potential action items. There's one item that is discussion, direction, and potential action regarding rescinding Resolution Number 3964, declaring all businesses in the city as essential businesses in order to receive CARES Act funding currently being withheld by the state. Marissa?
Thank you. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
So on May 7th, 2020, the city council passed and adopted Resolution Number 3964, declaring all businesses in the city as essential businesses. The resolution was passed and adopted with a four-to-one vote, and a copy of that resolution is attached to the staff report. On July 22nd, 2020, I received a call from Cal OES Legislative and External Affairs Director Reggie Salvador, Cal OES Lead Attorney Alex Powell, and the League of California City's Deputy Executive Director of Advocacy and Public Affairs. Mr. Salvador and Mr. Powell explained that Cal OES would be withholding the city of Colinga's CARES Act funding due to the city of Colinga adopting a resolution declaring all businesses as essential. They did state that in order for the city to receive funding, council would need to rescind that resolution. The city of Colinga's CARES Act allocation is 212,000 and, or I'm sorry, $212,358, and the documentation showing that dollar amount is attached as well. Also attached to the staff report is a letter that was sent to Governor Newsom from members of Congress regarding the dispersment of funds to local government agencies. I also have attached a letter that I received from Cal OES Thursday evening after I had received it from the Fresno Bee, and an email that I received from Cal OES when I invited them to participate in today's council meeting, and they stated they were not available. One thing that I did not attach, but was some further communication, was if you read that letter from Cal OES, that last paragraph states that not only are they asking the city to rescind the resolution, they're also asking us to start enforcing the governor's orders. And so I communicated that to them today and asked for clarification because I didn't feel that any other city in the state of California is being held to that standard. As we know, most cities in the valley are not enforcing the orders. And so I did get a response that stated, we do not have to enforce the orders. We would just need to rescind the resolution in order to receive the funding. I do have some information for you, just in case you were curious. So if we look at, and I don't know how the state determined our dollar amount for the allocation, but I did break it down by our population and our businesses. So if we took that $212,358 and divided it by every citizen that we have, that's about $12.84 per citizen. And if we took that $212,358 and divided it by the number of active business licenses we have in the city of Colinga, that's about $47 per business. I do have some general information for you that are sort of pros and cons for keeping the resolution versus rescinding the resolution, but I'll stop talking now so that you guys can talk, and then if you want some additional information, just let me know.
Excuse me, council.
I have a question. How, how much of that money do we have encumbered already?
So I would say that we have been very conservative in our spending related to the COVID pandemic. So we did purchase some masks and some hand sanitizer. We purchased, I believe, four laptops when we had employees working from home. And then we purchased a piece of equipment that sanitizes the back of the, the equipment in the back of the ambulances, and also a piece of equipment that sanitizes the playground structures and benches and trashcans and stuff on city streets and public parks. And so my best estimate is that we have probably spent just under $25,000, and the amount that we would be allocated is just over $212,000. That money can be spent on additional items such as overtime costs for public safety employees as they were responding to the COVID pandemic. And then it can also be used for programs for the community, whether it's like rental grants for the public or grants or loans for the businesses. And I also would like to say, though, that our budget is balanced for the current fiscal year, and it's not dependent on receiving these funds.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other comments, questions? Council?
I'll jump in here real quick. I just want to go over a few numbers. Everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to go over a few numbers. The city of Fresno learned back in April that they're going to get $93 million from the government, from the CARES Act money. If we compare what our citizens are worth to what Fresno citizens are worth, we'll see that our citizens are worth about $12.84 per person. If we look at Fresno, we can see that their citizens are worth $175.40 per person. Why is there such a big discrepancy? Why does the governor and our state representatives feel that we are worth less than what the citizens of Fresno are worth? So that for one really pisses me off. That also is 10% of Fresno's budget. What the state is trying to give us is 2%. Think about that. Think about the fairness there. Is that really fair? I don't think it is. Fresno has so much money that they put aside $38 million of that money that they got from the government to hold it in hopes that there's rule changes so they can spend it the way they want to. We're over here trying to get lunch money from the governor, and the governor's being a little school bully out there trying to steal our lunch money at $12.84 per person. That's lunch. Well, Fresno gets a whole $175.47. So I'm not buying into what the governor's saying. I ain't drinking his Kool-Aid. As for now, my vote's going to be to keep the resolution the way it is.
Thank you. Any other comments? Excuse me?
Yeah. My comment on this situation that we're in is that we went into this situation knowing what the outcome could possibly be. Okay, we did this for the businesses and the citizens of Colinga that we represent. We were elected to have their back in the time of need, and I think it's time for us to stand up and not be bullied, shoved, and pushed around and continue the path that we're on. And if we need to take it to the next level and take them to court or whatever we need to do, that, that's fine. But I think we need to stand up, step up, and be heard, and not just sit back and take what he says as golden. Because our businesses are what we thrive on. Our citizens are what we thrive on. So if we don't show them support, how are we going to grow? I mean, if we fall, then where do they have to stand? We have to continue the path that we're on. I mean, he can't control us like that.
I agree. I think we're setting precedent here as to if we are a city that supports its businesses or if we are a city that doesn't. Like I said, the governor's just being a school bully right now. He's just trying to steal our lunch money. He's so one-sided, it's ridiculous. We look back in April and we see that he closed down protests on the state Capitol because people were protesting to open back up. But he closed, closed those protests down, but then in June, he opens protesting back up again. So the social justice people and the people that he agrees with can go and protest again. He's gone so far to tell us what a meal is and how we can have a beer and what foods we can and can't eat. And he's gone and closed our churches down and said, you can't, you can't go to church and you can't sing at church, but you can go protest. You can do that. That's fine. Don't go to church. But he needs to realize that our churches have a higher calling and it's not to him. I have no doubt that if we agree to keep this resolution, that he's going to come back at us with something. And he will try and be more punitive than he already is. But that's pretty much all I have to say right now.
Other comments?
Yeah, I disagree with both of them on that too. I, I think we made a statement when we voted for what we got right now. And I think if we have any stamina to us, we have to stay with it. You have to think what you're going to vote on before you vote on it, and then stick by what you vote on. So I'm going to stay with my vote too. And I think, I think you're right. I think the governor's going to come back and try to do punitive stuff on us. But I, I think the majority of California will see that, see it in their own, and maybe we can replace this governor, because I think that's what it's going to take. And I just be ready, and I'm, I'm ready for the onslaught, and I think everybody else is here too, so. That's basically all I have to say right now. I, I would rather just keep the ordinance as we have it right now. And that's all.
Any other? Tonya?
Well, I'm actually the one that requested this because I felt we needed to talk about it again, since we're being treated like bad children by the governor. I'm listening to everybody and processing if my vote will remain the same or change. I don't like that he's doing this to us, singling us out, not only us. I know there's another community. I don't think it's fair, but a lot in life isn't fair. And the rules are the rules and the laws are the laws, but we have to look out for our community and our small businesses because if we lose them, there's going to be nothing here. And it'll probably be a worse devastation than what people say happened after the earthquake.
Any other comments? Or discussion? Go ahead.
Marissa, you said you had the, the pros and the cons of this. Can you kind of touch on that just a bit?
Yes. So some things that really stood out to me is in 2019, when Mayor Lander and Councilman Stoles and I went to ICSC Recon in Las Vegas to try to recruit businesses to come to Colinga, one thing that we continuously heard is, we don't do business in California or we are not expanding in California because California is not business-friendly. And so in 2020, we started a campaign to make Colinga the most business-friendly city in the state of California. Unfortunately, ICSC Recon was canceled this year due to COVID, but all of our material identifies Colinga as being the most business-friendly city in the state of California because that was our mission for this year and moving forward. And so a lot of times when we have to make decisions at the staff level, my question to staff is always, well, is that being the most business-friendly city in the state of California? And that helps us in choosing the correct answer. And so part of this whole process is we've heard from the small business owners, and we've heard from the community, and a lot of them have spoken, and they want the city to stand with the businesses, to say that a governor who's never been to the city of Colinga does not know which businesses are essential and which ones are not. And so the council has taken the position that all businesses are essential. You can certainly change your mind and you can rescind that resolution. However, that doesn't necessarily make us the most business-friendly city in the state of California. Additionally, right now, we're being told that the state will withhold the CARES Act funding if we do not rescind the resolution. So we know that we would not, we potentially would not get the $212,000 and some change, which again, our budget is not dependent on that. One concern with that, though, with not rescinding the resolution is that we don't know what else the state may do. Will they say that Colanga is no longer eligible for state grants? Will they withhold additional funding from the city that we need in order to operate that our budget is dependent on? Will they take punitive action in other ways? And so at this point, we just don't know. But that's something to keep in the back of your mind. And then the only real benefit to rescinding the resolution is that the state is telling us that that's the only thing that we need to do in order to receive those funds. And while the city is able to retain a portion of those funds, if the council so chooses, those funds can be used to benefit the local businesses and the residents. Some ways that other cities are doing that is grants or loans for small businesses and rental grants for residents who have been impacted by COVID-19. And so while I broke the numbers down by population of individual citizens or businesses, I mean, we can assume that not every business or every citizen is going to be in need. And so you have the ability to potentially help hundreds of citizens and/or several businesses if the money is received. But that's really the only benefit that I can see to rescinding the resolution. And so it is a tough decision for the council to make and probably not one to be taken lightly. But there's pros and cons for whichever option you choose today.
Can you tell us how much we're getting in the first install or how much we should be getting in the first installment? It's not that much, is it?
So I may be wrong, but my understanding was that it was 1/6 of the total amount. And that was just told to me by another city manager. I don't have anything from the state telling us what the percentage or amount would be.
So I heard something similar, like that was going to be somewhere around 38,000. I mean, really, who are we going to help with $38,000? Not that many people in a town this big. And then the rest of the money, it comes in increments. It doesn't come all at once. So we only have a little bit of money here, and we're going to get a little bit more money and a little bit more money. It's not like we can help everyone all at once.
I have a question for Mario. What kind of legal repercussion can come upon the city or a council? In your opinion or your thoughts above and beyond the governor possibly taking away state grants and however else he thinks he's going to punish us?
I think that's basically overall just withholding funds or putting a lot of strings on different funds. You know, you guys have seen that when we dealt with like prevailing wage, you know, where they just say, "You're going to do this. You're going to pay prevailing wage or you're not going to be entitled to grants anymore." So it's going to be a lot of things like that. It's not going to be, you know, there's not going to be any individual liability or anything like that. But it's going to be, you know, possibly withholding funds or putting extra strings on funds that weren't there before.
Thank you.
Excuse me, any other comments or questions? Mercedes has the comment there for me.
I received a comment from Glenn Mitchell. The thrift store employs six people at this time. The foundation has provided compliance materials consistent with Cal OSHA and the state.
Thank you. Any other?
So another question, Mario. So the government can do his thing and withhold, but can we go after the governor for our funds since they're federally funded?
Yeah, I think if, we're going to have another conversation in closed session, but I will tell you that if you look at the letter that was sent and that's attached in the agenda from the congressman, it lays out that there are certain strings that were attached to that money federally. And the Treasury Department said that states, when they give out this money, there's criteria that the states have to follow and only that. So there aren't any additional criteria that the state can impose on the dispersment of those funds. So to answer your question, yes. And it would be along those lines, basically saying that the state imposed funds or additional requirements on those funds when they just didn't have the ability to do so. Congress made it very clear what they wanted those monies to go for. And the Treasury Department then said, "You can only, states, you can only enact certain regulations to impose those specific rules." So that's, there's a clear disconnection between what the governor is saying now and the requirements for that money.
Thank you.
Excuse me, any other comments? Questions? Okay. Under this, we, oops, I have another layer. Mercedes?
I have a comment from Michelle Helmar. How many Colanga businesses would be impacted? Ones that are open now but would be considered nonessential under state guidance?
Well, I for one can tell you that because we are controlled by the state of California and my business and people that are in the cosmetology business are subject to fines by the state of California because we are licensed by the state of California. So I know that it has, has and will continue to impact us, people that are in the hair business or the nail business because we're licensed by the state. As far as the other businesses, I do believe that most all of them are open with the exception, I understand, of the fitness lab and one other facility. I also understand that the movie theater has been closed. It's not closed, but I mean, it's impacted. So, but other than that, the restaurants are all doing takeout. I've been around checking that. They're all doing that. Basically, that's it. I know it's a difficult situation. It's difficult for myself and my business. But unfortunately, I have to comply. I cannot stand or afford, let's put it this way, I cannot afford to have a heavy fine put on me or the person that works for me or even have my license suspended, which they have threatened to do. So we are subject to their whim. As far as the rest, the majority of business, because I've driven around and looked, as I said, and watched. Yes.
Just for a second. I don't think we should say which businesses are open and which businesses aren't because it's, I think the government might be listening to us right now. And I don't want them to go there and close anybody. So if we've already gave them the permission that they're essential businesses and if they want to open, they can, as far as Colanga is concerned. But if they're going against what the state wants, I don't want to give the state their names and which businesses they are, if they're a church or if they're a fitness center or anything like that. I would rather just, if the state wants to come in there and do it, it's up to them. But I don't want to give them any names or anything.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, so do we have a motion? Well, we have discussion direction, potential action regarding rescinding Resolution Number 3964, declaring all business in cities essential business in order to receive CARES Act funding currently being withheld by the state. Do we have a motion to rescind Resolution Number 3964? Once again, I will ask, do we have a motion to rescind Resolution 3964? That motion has failed by lack of emotion. That resolution has failed by a lack of a resolution. So we will go on to the next item, City Manager's Announcements. You have any announcements, Marissa?
Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make an emotion that we reaffirm Resolution Number 3964. I know we don't have to, but I think that's making a statement. And I think that we should have the vote on that.
I think by doing a lack of a resolution, that just pretty much reaffirms that resolution.
No, but that's my resolution. And I'd like to see if we can make that pass, too.
Counsel, is that your choice or no? That's not my choice, that's the council's choice. Does any, council, any discussion on this item? Mario, can we do that right now or no?
Yeah, you just need a second.
Okay, you have a motion. Do we have a second on that issue?
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second? May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Ramsey?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Stoles?
Aye.
Mayor Lander?
No. Okay, our next item, thank you. Our next item is City Manager's Announcements. We have any announcements, Marissa?
I just wanted to make sure that the council is aware that we do have a closed session item after this. And I had sent separate login information for the closed session call. So you would have to disconnect at the end of this meeting and then call in for closed session.
Okay. Our next item is Councilmembers' announcements. Any councilmembers have any announcements? Hearing none. Mayor's announcements? Oops, wait a minute. I have none.
One more comment came in by Jerry McLeod, I believe. Jeff, will Colanga get all of the $212,000?
Okay. Our next item is future agenda items. Any future agenda items, counsel? Okay. Our next item is closed session. We have one item, that's conference with legal counsel, initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9C1. It's one case. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you for your participation and attendance. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you for your participation and attendance.